I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Serz, would you call?
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 3.1, Ms. Serz, would you officially call attendance?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Moving on to item 3.2, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to certify and approve that all agenda items for the July 14, 2020 meeting are necessary to address, I don't think we need that part anymore, do we? With approval of the agenda?
Ooh, yep.
Okay, I was just reading the, the code there, yeah, I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Thank you very much.
Um, I noticed on the agenda, there's no monthly bills and payroll, that's because it's July and it's just the first, first of the fiscal year.
I presume so, Ms. Ewing is outside, I can certainly check.
Well, it's too late now, I just wanted to throw that out there, just.
Generally, this is a very short meeting, I think we don't.
I think the first meeting of the new fiscal year, we don't, right?
Yes.
Because, yeah.
I think that's correct, I just wanted to make sure that we clarify that.
On that.
We like to put it on the agenda now, so we just, something we can clarify.
We can clarify that what we think is correct. So we've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Yes, I.
So we just need to call, roll, we have a motion and a second.
I think we want to get an answer to the question.
Also, under executive content, is, are we paying the COVID-19?
Not any longer, we're outside of that.
Yeah, okay.
Moving forward, that needs to come off.
Mr. Kelly, you're correct, there are no bills and payroll in July because of the transition into the new fiscal year.
Thank you.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Moving on to item 4.1, announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, announcements are short this evening, WJCC school staff is busy preparing for the upcoming school year, and this evening, we will present our plan for return to learn, but before we move into next year, I'd like to take a moment to thank our child nutrition and operations staff for their ongoing work, since March 16th, they've served 109,855 grab and go meals to over 23,000 students, we continue to provide this valuable service to families throughout the summer, so thank you to each and every one of the teams who are involved in grab and go, also, a very special thank you goes to the Williamsburg Presbyterian Church Women's Group for providing $4,500, $500,000 to help offset current and future school lunch debt, debt, we deeply appreciate the community's ongoing support of our students and schools, Madam Chair, that concludes my announcements this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, I know Ms. Cook plans to give an update on our liaison meeting from earlier this morning, and then if there are other folks who have announcements, I'll start with Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair, as you said, the liaison committee met this morning and welcomed new member Pat Dent from City Council, Williamsburg City Council, and we focused on two major topics, the first was a request to make sure that Williamsburg and James City County, when they do their, their comprehensive plan updates every five years, that they work with the school division to include schools, new schools, and land use planning, including our mutual agreement that at 85% capacity, we need to start discussing the need for new educational space, and at 90% capacity, we need to make a decision, so to make sure that those items are in there, so that it's one more avenue for the public and the planning commissions of each locality to understand our mutual agreement with the localities, we also talked a little bit about communicating collectively the need for new educational space moving forward, and then we also spent some time on advocacy and are committed, recommitted to making sure that we're advocating for education funding together with one voice, and the next step to that end is to try to pull together in sometime in September, a joint meeting with the three bodies, City Council, Board of Supervisors, School Board, in addition to the four members of our General Assembly delegation, to have Jim Regenball come again and talk about education funding in our, in our region, so we will be working on that, and we will be meeting again in September after that larger joint special call meeting, so I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. The questions for Ms. Cook are any additional announcements? I did just want to share that WJCC family lost two young men in the last three weeks, just wanted to say that we are thinking about their families as well as their school community of Jamestown, and DJ. So moving on to citizens' comments, I do not believe we had any folks. Moving on to item 6.1, proposed suspension of policy BDDHKD, and this is public comment, and we are suspending this and will be doing it differently the way that we have been doing it, we had originally suspended many board policies because of COVID while we were meeting virtually with consultation from our attorney, it was made clear that we, for safety purposes and to social distance, will continue to seek public comment, but want to receive that via phone calling in, so the practice stays the same, but we just need to make this clear in policy, so we will temporarily suspend this, recognizing that we'll do it differently, and it was not recommended that we put an end date on it, if there are questions, I can try to answer those.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't, I agree with not putting an end date on it, but I just want to make sure that it, that we're, it's on our list to reinstate it when the time comes, that we don't forget to do that.
Yes, yeah, I like that. Any additional comments or questions? We'll be voting on that shortly here, if not, moving on to item 6.2, tuition rates for non-resident students for 2020 and 2021 school year, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, annually, we bring to you tuition rates, they're established annually for non-resident students in accordance with school board policy, and Ms. Ewing is coming across the hall this evening to give us the update on the tuition costs for this year.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron, annually, we bring the non-resident tuition rate for the upcoming school year to you for approval, the tuition rates are based on the adopted fiscal year 21 budget, and the calculation is based on the same methodology as used in prior years, the recommended tuition rate for regular education is $10,575, which is an increase of $36, or .35% over fiscal year 20, and the special education tuition rate is recommended to be $18,431, which is essentially the same as fiscal year 20 at a decrease of $3, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Ms. Ewing?
Just for our viewing public, how, how many people typically will pay out of zone?
In fiscal year 20, we had one student pay second semester for one class that they needed to take, and then fiscal year 19 and 8, had one full-time student.
Ms. Cook?
And we only take students if we have space, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Ow.
Yeah, once they move into the area, they're no longer needing to pay this out of the zone, that's right.
Correct, once they're residents, they don't pay tuition.
Any additional questions for? Item 6.3, 2020 and 2021 CNS food and consumable purchase.
Thank you, Madam Chair, annually, Child Nutrition Services Department purchases food and consumables from a variety of vendors, and Mr. Snipes is present this evening to bring us that information.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Heron, tonight's agenda item is an annual request for bulk purchases for foods and consumables, the cooperative agreements enable CNS to increase their purchasing power through economies of scale, some of the items that will, that CNS purchases are things like paper, milk, and cleaning supplies, the vendors that require approval at your next meeting will be SSIPAC, which are your cleaning supplies for Child Nutrition Services, as well as First Colony Pizza, which is also known as Domino's Pizza, and I can take any questions, Ellie and I are here to answer any questions.
We'll actually be voting on this. Aye.
Because of cleaning supplies, are we also going to anticipate another, like, larger kind of purchase, or kind of cleaning that we're going to have to, above and beyond what we?
This request is strictly for CNS supplies, are you talking about in general for the entire school division?
In general, for the whole.
Yes, we've already purchased extra cleaning supplies, and we've been able to do some of that through the city of Williamsburg, providing CARES Act funding, and we're using it for that purpose and cataloging everything that we buy.
Okay, thank you.
We're not voting on this tonight, it's the next meeting.
Nope, yep. Ms. Cook, did you have a question? Moving on to item 6.4, approve a purchase request of laptops for staff and middle school student.
Thank you, Madam Chair, each year, we bring you information regarding the technology refresh cycle, Mr. Landers is here to present this item this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron, this agenda item is to ask your approval of purchasing staff and student-use laptops and services in support of our ongoing technology refresh cycle, purchase request will allow replacement of 310 staff laptops, 1,025 middle school student laptops, as well as insurance and extended services for a total purchase price of $808,297.50, purchase will be made using the state contract with Lenovo, and the funds are budgeted within the Technology Cost Center, thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Mr.?
The last meeting, we approved 1.3, 1.75 million dollars' worth of computers, and now this is an additional 800?
Yes, sir, the difference is that the previous purchase was to increase our device count to be able to go one-to-one division-wide, this purchase is to replace devices that we currently have but are aging out and are in need of replacement.
Do you have the capacity to manage 3,000 computers coming into your system?
That's part of the reason we are engaging the services.
Okay, and so the, what we replaced last time, in three or five years' time, we'll need to replace those as well?
Correct, what we purchased previously, we are maintaining a four-year refresh cycle, so in four years, we will need to be prepared to replace those items as well.
And then I just wanted to note, and then Ms. Young, I'll get you, so what we approved the last meeting was, those monies were the CARES Act monies from the county, specifically to bolster the one-to-one, Ms. Young?
Approximately, how much do we pay for a single computer?
It averages out to about $600 per device, that includes the cost of the hardware, all licenses, the additional insurance, and the additional services, all of that together is approximately 600 per device.
Thank you. Dr. Beers?
Yes, sir, with the previous purchase, we're, we're there.
Kim. Kim.
I know this question's been asked before, but I was sitting over there before, what happens with these laptops once they're replaced, what, what's the process for them?
Once they, they aged out, we take them in, we wipe them of all data, we have another vendor that comes in and evaluates them, and we actually see a little bit of money returned to the division for those old devices.
What does that look like, that little bit of money?
I'm sorry?
That little bit of money, what does that look like, and what does it go towards?
It goes back into the general fund, the, the money, it averages, depending on the, how bad a shape the device is in, once we sell it, it could be as little as $15, $20 per device, we've had it as high as $80, $90 for some devices.
But my daughter's listening, because I tell her to take care of that thing, slamming that top, so, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Landers, so now that we've purchased a larger amount of devices because of the CARES Act money, because we were able to get that money, are we going to have to over time kind of smooth the purchases so that we don't have a, a big chunk in every four years?
Yes, ma'am, that is a challenge that I'm looking at right now, we're, basically what we want to do is take our inventory and divide it by four, so that every year, we have that chunk of money set aside, budgeted upfront, we know what we're going to have to reflect, refresh every year.
And Ms. Cook, just to clarify as well, we'd need to consider adding money to the budget next year in that technology line, so we keep that four-year refresh cycle, because after four years, the computers are not usable for our students.
Yes, ma'am. Landers, this isn't related to financing of the computers specifically, but in a user-friendly way, what do we do as a division to ensure that the laptops are, are safe when our kids take them home, like what, in terms of like firewalls or other like, fill my head to explain it?
Well, in the past year, we have added a new software component to every device, it's called Global Protect, basically what that does is no matter where that device is in the world, once it connects to the internet, it is automatically tunneled back to our firewall, so all of our filters, all of our protections are in place, no matter where that device may be.
Thank you, go on that.
I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Landers, because when I hear about what price we're paying, and what we get for that price, and all the extra firewalls and protection, thank you for all that you do for the school system.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any additional questions, Ms. Young?
Yes, Mr. Landers, again, thank you, but I do have a question, I mean, many divisions have been hacked, do we have attempts, do we know if we're, if there have been attempts to attack, hack our system?
Yes, ma'am, we're, attempts are made every day against our division, we are constantly battling attempts to get into our network, anything from, you know, simple spam emails to ransomware attacks, we see them on a daily basis, which is why it is critically important, and thanks to the board action last year, we were able to install the new firewall, that was huge in protecting our division and our students and staff data, but we, we are constantly vigilant, keeping them patched, maintained, up to date, crossing our fingers that our vigilance will, will be successful.
Thank you, I just, I just want to see your sword one of these days for attacking these people, thank you.
If I could just add to that, if you recall, there was a position in the budget that was originally proposed in the budget to add a, an extra person, literally to focus on that network's security and add to Mr. Landers' staff, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do that because of our budget cuts, but certainly, it's something we need to keep in the back of our minds, because that's a growing issue daily for, for our technology department, that's what keeps Mr. Landers up at night.
Thank you, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, just in the last few minutes, you've brought up two things that we really need to keep in mind for next year's budget, and, you know, this was dramatically different process for us this year, but I would appreciate, as we go through our meetings over the next year, if you could continue to remind us of those things, I would be very grateful, because I think not only the board, but the public would benefit from that, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Landers?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landers.
Okay, item 6.5, authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, annually, the board authorizes key leadership people to sign, and on my behalf, if I'm not available, to sign off on financial documents, accountability, and to be my designated within the system, we're asking you to authorize Ms. Renee Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Corey Murphy, Chief of Staff, and Mr. Shawn Walker, Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence of the superintendent through August 2021.
Dr. Heron, do you have questions, comments?
Is there any guidance that says that it has to be three?
No, sir.
Two or four?
Two will work, absolutely.
Okay, moving on to item 6.6, VSA delegate and alternate, Ms. Hummel and I are willing to serve in that role we did this past year, but if there were someone else who would like to serve as the alternate, I think Ms. Ms. Hummel would share that responsibility.
I'm very willing to let Ms. Hummel.
Thank you both, that is really wonderful of you, and you.
And Mr. Dowell may not, so really, the primary function of this is that the annual VSA conference, and we will vote on their legislative platform, that's, so, if everyone is okay with that.
Like a three-hour meeting on the afternoon, well-hearted.
Yes, me too, you're welcome.
Gratitude to boot.
Okay, moving on, so moving on to consent agenda, approval of minutes from the meeting on June 16th, 2020.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of minutes from the special call meeting on June 16th, 2020.
And, and personnel.
And the personnel.
And the personnel actions.
Thank you, your second.
My second, all that.
Any discussion?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Now, moving on to action items, 8.1, suspension of policy BDDHKD, public participation at board meetings, is there a motion to?
Madam Chair, I move that we suspend policy BDDHKD, public participation at board meetings.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serz.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 8.2, tuition rates for non-resident students for 2020, 2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve tuition rates for non-resident students for the 2020.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for the record, can we enumerate the amounts? Amounts of $10,575 for regular education and $18,431 for basic special education.
Very much, Ms. Cook. Any comments or discussion? Very none, Ms. Serz.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 8.3, approve a purchase request of laptops for staff and middle school student use.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a purchase request for 1,335 laptops, Lenovo laptops, in the amount of $808,297.50.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Second.
Sorry.
Everyone's second. Any discussion? Serz?
Okay.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
That's, that's to be done in August.
That's next, next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
You're an eight.
Sorry, oh, oh, sorry, okay.
8.4, authorization of signatures in absence of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize Ms. Renee Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Corey Murphy, Chief of Staff, and Mr. Shawn Walker, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence of the superintendent through August 15th, 2021.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a quick question, do we have another authorization document just for a general financial, or is it just this one?
It's this one, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Question? Very none, Ms. Serz.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
And item 8.5, VSA delegate and alternate?
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Ms. Lisa Ombi and Ms. Julie Hummel to serve as VSA voting delegate and alternate delegate respectively, for the VSA Delegate Assembly and Regional Meeting at the VSA Annual Convention, November 18 to 20, 2020.
Second.
Question?
Thank you both for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
No additional discussion, Ms. Serz.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
And moving on to information items, 9.1, return to learn, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, one of the most challenging decisions we will have to make in the weeks ahead is how to return to learn in WJCC schools, and this evening, I'm going to present some information about health and mitigation strategy, and some of the pathways we could well be on depending on local data, local health data, this evening, Ms. Bujua is going to start the conversation and provide information on all of the health and safety and cleaning protocols, and then she'll be followed by Mr. Walker, who's going to take us through the, the learning paths in the plan, thank you, Ms. Bujua.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron, WJCC schools prioritizes the health and safety of students and employees above all else, building on that foundation, the division has created four paths for a return to learning for the 2020, 2021 school year, these paths are aligned with guidance from the Virginia Department of Education, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, and state and local health experts. In all instances, health and education experts recommend mitigation strategies to promote healthy behaviors, and to the greatest extent possible, lessen the possibility for the continued spread of illness, even the American Academy of Pediatrics, which just last week encouraged the return of students to school, clarified its position on Friday, saying that, quote, "Public health agencies must make recommendations based on evidence, not politics," the statement also said that "science and community circumstances must guide that Based on the guidance from the CDC and other that decision-making. Based on the guidance from the CDC and others, the W J C C Schools' health plan was developed by a team of school nurses and student health professionals. The plan is currently being reviewed by health experts, including Pennsyl Health Department staff, a local pediatrician, and a professor in the Department of Health Sciences at the College of William and Mary. Generally, W J C C schools will implement the following mitigation strategies to reduce the spread of illness in school buildings and offices. Daily symptom checks and self-assessment for wellness by staff before reporting to work. And parents will assess their children for wellness before sending them to school. A screening tool will be provided to all staff and families for this purpose. Use of face coverings by staff is required, and it is highly recommended for students to wear face coverings as well. Social distancing to the greatest extent possible, enhanced hygiene practices that include frequent hand washing and increased availability of hand sanitizer, air and isolation for students and staff who exhibit symptoms, and an emphasis on social and emotional wellness for our staff and students. W J C C Schools' custodial teams will clean school buildings multiple times a day, paying particular attention to common areas and critical touchpoints, such as door handles, tables, stair rails, and other hard surfaces. They use disinfectant and cleaning products recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. In addition to cleaning surfaces, W J C C schools will perform preventative maintenance of HVAC systems more frequently and evaluate airflow in buildings taking additional measures as needed. If a student or staff member reports symptoms of COVID-19 or becomes ill, enhanced cleaning will include pressure washing areas, deep carpet cleaning, and the continued use of foggers to clean. When students return to onsite learning, a social distancing and face coverings will be needed on school buses. Bus windows will be open whenever possible to increase air circulation on the buses. Drivers will sanitize buses between each tier and thoroughly clean buses at the end of morning and afternoon runs. Last Friday, Governor Northam cautioned the public why deep cleaning and the mitigation strategies I've just described are so important when planning for a return to school. He said, and I quote, "It's not only the children in school, it's the staff that could contract this. And the point I would make is if our teachers and our staff can't stay healthy, if they contract the virus, then it's all moot." The governor went on to say, "I want as much as anybody to get back in school. But if our numbers don't stay where they are, if we can't remain in Phase 3, then we're not going to be able to move forward with So with that in mind, and using Governor Northam's phased approach to reopening, all of the guidance available from health experts, and the Virginia Department of Education recommendations, school administration developed a multi-tiered plan that we are calling Return to Learn, Forward W J C C Schools. At this time, I would like to invite Shawn Walker, Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership, to come forward to give you an overview of the plan and tell you about an additional choice that will be available to families.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Before we look at each path to learning, I want to mention that to support the equitable access to learning during all paths, students in grades K through 2 will receive a W J C C Schools issued tablet. Students in grades 3 through 12 will receive laptops to access electronic classrooms, lessons and assignments, and submit coursework. Those devices have been ordered. If some do not arrive by the first day of school, we will have backup learning plans available. Enhanced Internet connectivity will also be available at public libraries, in-school parking lots, and neighborhoods through mobile hotspots and partnerships with city and county agencies and local service providers. This slide reveals the four paths to learning that make up the W J C C Schools' plan known as Return to Learn, Forward W J C C Schools. Path 1, Remote Learning for All Students at Home. Path 2, Limited Blended Learning, that's remote and at school, for some special populations and some specific grade levels. Path 3, Blended Learning for All Students Pre-K through 12. And then Path 4, On-Site Learning for All Students. Path 1, Remote Learning. All students will engage in new instruction through remote learning using W J C C Schools' issued tablets and laptops. Attendance, participation in lessons, and completion of assignments will be monitored and graded. Select academic screenings and assessments, such as PALS, kindergarten readiness, and gifted and special education evaluation processes, may occur in-person at schools with strict social distancing practices. Bus transportation to academic screenings and assessments will be available with social distancing practices in place. Special education services and I E Ps and 504 plans will be coordinated with families and may include remote instruction and/or teletherapies. No in-person extracurricular activities or athletics will take place in Path 1. School buildings and offices will be closed to the public. Grab-and-go meals will be available for pickup at designated distribution sites. So what does this mean for employees? Staff will work remotely when possible and in coordination with their supervisors. Established leave policies and practices remain in place. Employees who must report to work locations or schools will complete daily self-assessments for wellness and wear face coverings in others' presence. Staff will participate in job-specific professional development, focusing on the delivery of remote instruction, student engagement, health and safety practices, and the use of various technology and communication platforms. Teachers will provide regular and timely communication to families and students. Path 2 includes limited blended learning for some elementary students and students from special populations. Students in grades 4 through 12 will continue engaging in new instruction solely through remote learning. Students in pre-K through grade 3, as well as some K through 12 students with disabilities and some English learners, will participate in blended learning that includes both remote instruction and in-person learning on alternating schedules with limited class size. Attendance days will be determined by the student's last name. For example, a second-grade student whose last name is Adams will attend school in-person on Monday and Tuesday, designated as the Blue Day, with remote learning the remaining three days of the week. A second-grade student whose last name is Williams will take part in remote learning Monday and Tuesday, followed by in-person learning Wednesday and Thursday, the Green Days, with Friday being a remote learning day for all students. This method will allow the majority of children to attend school in the same days as their siblings. Blended families with more than one last name should contact the school directly for assistance. Areas such as cafeterias and media centers will be closed during Path 2. Bus transportation will be provided with social distancing measures in place. Parents are asked to assess students for wellness before sending them to school. Staff will wear face coverings in common areas and while moving throughout the classroom. Teachers may remove face coverings when they are at the front of the classroom, at least six feet away from students. Students will wear face coverings on buses, and social distancing will be used to the greatest extent possible. It is highly recommended that students will wear face coverings throughout the day, especially during small group instruction at the elementary schools. Additionally, face coverings are highly recommended for the older students throughout the day as well. Based on guidance from the Virginia High School League, V H S L, limited athletic activities might resume and may include conditioning and/or drills. In all instances, social distancing and appropriate equipment cleaning measures will be used. Extracurricular activities might resume on a limited basis with appropriate social distancing and will be limited based on the number of participants and the ability to practice social distancing. So what does Path 2 mean for our employees? Instructional staff will facilitate remote and/or onsite instruction. This allows the division to deliver high-quality instruction for students while supporting staff who may fall into an at-risk category identified by state and local health officials or their health care provider. Employees working at schools and offices will complete daily self-assessments for wellness and wear face coverings in the presence of others. Path 3, Blended Learning. All students in grades pre-K through 12 will take part in blended learning that includes both remote instruction and in-person learning at schools on alternating schedules with limited class size. Attendance days will once again be determined by the student's last name. For example, a ninth-grade student whose last name is Baker will attend school in-person on Monday and Tuesday, with remote learning the remaining three days of the week. Ninth-grade student whose last name is Thompson will take part in remote learning Monday and Tuesday, followed by in-person learning Wednesday and Thursday, with Friday being a remote learning day for all students. This method, again, will allow the majority of children to attend school in the same days as their siblings. Again, blended families with more than one last name are encouraged to contact the school directly for assistance. Use of common areas such as cafeterias, gymnasiums, and media centers will be limited in adherence to operational guidance from the CDC. Bus transportation will be provided with social distancing measures in place, again, to the greatest extent possible, and with students wearing face coverings. Extracurricular activities will be limited based on the number of participants and the ability to practice social distancing. When athletic programs are allowed to resume, participation and competitions will be aligned with V H S L guidance and will include mitigation strategies to support health and wellness. Pre-grab-and-go meals will be available to eligible students during the school year. Meals will be sent home with students on either Tuesday or Thursday based on their onsite learning assigned days. So what does Path 3 mean for W J C C employees? Instructional staff will continue to facilitate remote and/or onsite instruction, allowing the division to deliver high-quality instruction for students while continuing to support our staff who may fall into an at-risk category identified by state and local health officials or their health care provider. Similar to Path 2, employees working at schools and offices will continue completing daily self-assessments for wellness and wearing face coverings in the presence of others. Established policies and practices related to personal sick or annual leave remain in place during Path 3. So before we move on to the fourth learning path, I want to share some sample schedules by level with you. Here are the remote and blended learning plans for elementary school students. You will note that total screen time during remote instruction varies by grade level. And as mentioned in the blended learning format, students will be split into two groups, blue and green, based on that first letter of the last name. Blue group, including students whose last name begin with A through L, will be onsite Monday and Tuesday. The green group, students whose last name begins with M through Z, will be onsite Wednesday and Thursday. And all students will learn remotely on Fridays. Here's a sample instructional schedule for middle school students by grade level. The actual schedule for blended learning remains the same as during remote learning for middle school. The only difference is that students will be onsite for learning two days and then will participate in remote learning three days. As a reminder, students will be separated into those two groups by last name. Blue group, again, A through L. The green group, last name, M through Z, attending in-person on Wednesdays and Thursdays. This slide, you will see the sample high school schedule for Path 1. Remember, remote in learning is at home. And next is the sample high school schedule for Path 3, which is blended learning for all grades pre-K through 12. As a reminder, even in high school, students will be separated into two groups by last name. Blue group, A through L, last name, attending school in-person on Mondays and Tuesdays. The green group, students' last names beginning with M through Z, attending school in-person on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Now, moving on to Path 4, On-Site Learning. All students in grades pre-K through 12 will take part in onsite instruction at school. Some restrictions may continue to be in place as needed for health and safety. However, it will feel more like the traditional school day. Extracurricular activities will resume. Athletic programs and competitions will follow the guidance of the V H S L, and bus transportation returns to traditional operations. What does this mean for families in the community? School buildings and offices will be open to the public during business hours. Volunteer opportunities in schools will resume. Reminders about social distancing, frequent hand washing, and other health practices will be posted throughout schools and offices. Grab-and-go meal services will be discontinued, though. Community use of schools and facility rentals will return to the pre-COVID-19 protocols. What does this mean for our employees? Employees will be encouraged to monitor their health and report any illness to their supervisor. Staff may choose to wear face coverings as a personal health protection. Teachers will continue to use electronic platforms to support classroom instruction and develop remote learning resources. May ask, why is that important? Because it is possible for schools to move between the paths at any time during the year based on the number of reported cases of COVID-19 in our schools, our local community, or the state of Virginia. So we continue to use electronic and online platforms throughout the school year to support instruction and easing the transitions between the learning In addition to the four paths that have been outlined, W J C C schools will offer a family choice option for year-long virtual learning. Selecting virtual learning is a commitment for the student to complete at least one semester online, regardless of what path the school division is currently on. The virtual courses will be 100% online, taught by W J C C Schools' teachers, and will include live instruction, independent assignments and activities that are appropriate for each grade level. Attendance, participation in lessons, and completion of assignments will be monitored and graded. Some select academic screenings and assessments may occur in-person at schools with strict social distancing practices. Before choosing this option, students are encouraged, along with their family, to complete a self-assessment to gauge readiness for virtual learning. Information will be sent to all W J C C families about the four learning paths and the family choice option for virtual learning. Families must indicate their choice for their child to participate in year-long virtual learning by completing an online registration no later than July 24th. What does this mean for our students? Elementary students will participate in online and offline activities daily that will require Elementary students will participate in online and offline activities daily that will require approximately five hours of instructional experiences. Continuous screen time, though, will not exceed educational guidelines based on the age of the student. Secondary students will take part in daily online learning that mirrors the instructional schedule used in the WJCC middle schools and high schools. Students will submit all assignments through Canvas or Student View as required by the teacher. Printed materials will not be accepted. Student View will be the grade book of record and will serve as the system of record documenting student progress. Special education services, IEPs, 504 plans, will be coordinated with families and, again, may include remote instruction and/or teletherapies. Students who participate in this year-long virtual learning opportunity can take part in extracurricular activities. It is important to note that there is no guarantee beyond the 2020-21 school year that 100% virtual learning will be available to WJCC school students. It is important to note that there is no guarantee beyond the 2020-21 school year that 100% virtual learning will continue to be an option.
Thank you.
Beyond. That's a brief overview of our Return to Learn Forward WJCC Schools Plan. Please know that we acknowledge the diverse opinions regarding how schools should operate in the new school year and the need for families to have time to plan. Where will we be in September and which path will be used at the start of the school year? That depends greatly on the number of COVID-19 cases and the guidance provided by the governor, VDOE, and health experts. We anticipate making a formal announcement by August 5th. For planning purposes, families should understand that the opening path could change between August and the 1st of September. No matter which path we're on for the first day of school, preventative measures such as social distancing, rigorous cleaning protocols, and the use of face coverings will be in place in order to mitigate the potential spread of illness. Before we take your questions, I want to let you know that Dr. Heron has facilitated focus group meetings and shared an overview of these learning paths with members of the WJCC Teacher Forum, WJCEA, representatives from the WJCC Support Employee Forum, and all school principals. Communication will go out to all staff from Human Resources this week about returning to work and resources for employees that might be in need of accommodations. Employees will also receive the email and phone call that is going to go out to all families with details about each learning path and the family choice option for year-long virtual learning. And that completes our report this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Who would like to start? Probably all have lots of questions. Should I just do a round robin and start with Ms. Hummel and I'll just go around?
Start with me. So am I correct in assuming that this will fluctuate according to whatever the governor's phases are?
Yes, ma'am.
So like, whatever, if we're in phase three now and as a state we misbehave and we get moved back to two, this is, we're going to Path Two?
Yes, we will follow the phases generally, but we certainly will be looking at local data as well because different, we're quite spread out, and the west of Virginia was very different to the east coast for a long time. And so we will be talking to local experts and getting their perspective as well as looking at the phases across the state. I think it's important to have some local input from health experts right in this area to make a very informed decision.
And so that's going to be an ongoing continual process where...
That's correct.
And then, how much advance notice do you think we'll be able to give our families when we switch? I'm saying when, because I'm assuming it'll be when.
I think it's very hard to say. And, I mean, obviously, it was very abrupt on March 13th, and everyone was out of school immediately. I mean, I think there are trend patterns. We can watch them very carefully in our community right now. The numbers are increasing, which is very alarming. So we'll be looking at the numbers and, again, checking in with a small group of people that we're pulling into an advisory group locally to help us make that choice that's best for students and for staff as well.
So just, you know, everyone needs to be aware that at any given time, they've got, they have to have a Plan B in place.
Yeah, that's correct. And also, if there is an outbreak in one school, then it could be just one school closed. So there's so much unknown. We're encouraging staff and students to stay in bubbles within their school, so all first grade teachers would stay within their area. There may be someone who has COVID-19 and identified as such in just one grade level. That doesn't necessarily mean the whole school would close down at that point. So we're, we have, the nurse will play an incredibly important role in this year in working through the protocol, looking at all of the symptoms that are being displayed, involving local health authorities, literally on a daily basis, to make a good decision for teachers and for students.
Okay, so that's, that's interesting for me because I, so you're saying that these, these four different paths are not going to be determined on a system-wide. It, it could, you could literally have one school be on Path Three and another school on Path Two?
I think it's extremely unpredictable, and so I don't want to say it'll be one way or other, but the whole purpose is to continue learning regardless of what's going on. And so that continuity of learning is what we're trying to build in, and even the remote learning is very different from what parents and families and students would have experienced in the spring, where we have many more structures in place and grading and assessment, and even a very different learning management system to deliver instruction. So I think the experience will be very different regardless of which path that we happen to fall in, but the key is we're committed to delivering learning for students.
Okay, thanks. I'll let everyone else go.
Kelly.
You deserve the right to come back. First of all, I appreciate the mobile Wi-Fi hotspots in the neighborhoods. I think that's a real important thing to do and, you know, going out there and reaching our students. I think that's good. The challenge, the challenge that we have is if you put yourself into position of our families and having to make a decision, so, so just, so if we were to open schools today, where would we be? Phase Two? Phase Three? Phase One?
I think we'd be looking at local data. If you'd asked me the question two weeks ago, I probably would have said Phase Three or Path Three.
Path Three.
I think I'd be looking closely at the numbers and asking for a lot of guidance as to where we would be right now, especially with the increasing numbers.
Right, and so, and I'll go there right now. So, so the data we're looking at as far as making choice for WJCC is statewide data? It's local data?
I think it's both, because I think the trends do tend to start one place and go to another.
Because it's interesting that, you know, the governor, you know, has left it up to the 130-plus superintendents to make a decision, and while you can say that he threw 130 superintendents plus under the bus, it was more, you know, local school boards, local choice, and so this is, this is, this is the hard part about local choice, right?
Absolutely.
And, and it's just, you know, you put yourself in the position of our, of our families of, so, so here on July 14th, they had to decide in 10 days whether they're going to go 100% virtual for this first semester, right?
Yeah, that's an extremely difficult choice, but from the perspective, from a division perspective, it impacts staffing across our whole system.
Sure, yeah.
And also, when we, with the information going out from HR and what accommodations will some staff need, we've got a lot of different information to coordinate to actually lift off in the beginning of school.
Right, and so, so we call it family choice, but can individual students in that family make different choices?
Absolutely, it's by student.
Okay, so, so it's by student. So if, if your fifth grader can do it and your ninth grader can't, then you can make different choices there.
And, Mr. Kuyt, as we were really encouraging everyone to, we're giving the link to the student assessment.
Right.
So that families really think carefully about the impact on a student and whether they have the, they're that type of student who can cope with an online environment.
So from a family perspective, they have to, they have to basically develop several plans. What do we do in Phase One? What do we do in Phase Two? What do we do in Phase Three? And then Phase Four looks more like what we did on March 12th versus what we were doing on March 14th.
Sir.
So, so that's a challenge. So, so in the, in the spring, our, our remote learning, our online learning for the teachers was all off of our WJCC on their school webpages?
Correct. Our student and parent view.
That was, that's what we're going in this semester, but in the spring, it was off of, it was...
We, we actually lifted up, and Mr. Walker would probably speak better to this, we actually raised up our parent and student view platform overnight to begin to deliver instruction.
Okay.
And put all of the materials on that site. So we moved from paper packets into that long online environment and created the lessons every two weeks for teachers.
So, so in the spring, was it available to publicly, to, all those, all those teachers' lessons, were they available?
Yes, because of the very urgent nature of the situation and wanting to make sure everybody had access, we, not every parent was linked up to parent view and student view at that time, and so it was a huge push for that, but we also put all of the lessons publicly on our website.
Right.
Confirmed with Ms. Cox. That will not be the case in the fall. Only those students who are our students will have access through parent and student view to the learning that we're offering as a school division.
Okay, and so, we go, we're in Phase Two, and the pre-K through Three are coming two days a week and remote three days a week, vice versa. So are the teachers that they're, that they're in front of at school the same teachers who are developing the remote learning for the other three days, or how do we envision that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walker can speak to that because the teachers won't be doing both at the same time. Mr. Walker?
That's correct. So let's take a second-grade teacher who may be coming in to provide that onsite, in-person learning, Monday and Tuesday for half of her class, and then Wednesday and Thursday, the other half will show up. The group that leaves out on Monday and Tuesday will leave with homework, student engagement activities that might be paper pencil, that might be remote virtual opportunities off the laptop or the tablet. They're not expected to simultaneously teach in person and be over on the side trying to monitor online virtual instruction.
Okay, so, so if I look at it for the, for the pre-K through Three, round numbers and roughly, half of those teachers are, we want in the classroom and half of them will be doing remote learning, developing remote learning?
No, sir.
Teachers will be there working in person with our youngest students.
But three days a week, they're working remote?
No.
Students are working remote?
Correct, that is correct.
Who develops the curriculum for those students that are working remote three days a week?
They're currently, there, there are teams from all levels, elementary, middle, and high this summer that have been writing digital resources and putting that in play for teachers to have. During the spring, curriculum, CNI coordinators were really lifting that heavily and providing it. Again, that support will be there, but they're working now ahead of time to make sure that information's there.
Do we have a plan of getting there for second semester?
We have the first nine weeks as well on the way to being completed, and we're bringing in more teacher teams during the summer to write the second nine weeks, and then, once we've done that, we'll go into the third nine weeks. It's a huge task and has involved hundreds of staff members, and all of it is to make sure we can literally transition from one to the other.
Right, I mean, because, because I think, I think all of us have had teachers who have contacted us and said that we are not comfortable going back to school, and then there are some teachers that are ready to go, to go see their kids. And then, conversely, we have students that have the same, and parents have the same problem of whether they send their kids to school, and, you know, the, the empirical data tells us that, most of the empirical data that you read tells you that kids aren't affected by that too mu, by it too much, and kids don't necessarily transmit it to adults, although some studies will say that they can, and, you know, they're worried about kids coming home with, coming home and affecting family members and grandparents and all of that, and so, so, so I guess the dates that we have to keep in mind, in 10 days from now, we have to decide, have to decide family choice. August 5th, we're going to put our stab at where we're going to be September 8th, but we don't know where we're going to be September 8th. So, so as a family, you have to develop a plan for each one of the, if you, if you have to develop a plan for each one of the phases?
That's correct, sir, and the biggest challenge is to put, to make a decision on August 5th, and really, the purpose of that was to try to help with planning, but realistically, there's a long time between that August date and September 8th.
Well, I mean, in today's calendar, there is. I mean, back in March and April, everything was changing by the minute and the hour, and now we're kind of more into the every day, but still, there's a lot of days between August 8th and Sep, or September, August 5th and September 8th.
Absolutely.
With things to change, whether they, whether they go well or they don't go well. And so, so another, another message for the public, and this is not just the school-age kids' public, but, you know, wearing your mask and doing, making the right decisions impacts the broader society, and so, you know, wear your mask when you're, when you're out and about and make, make decisions about whether you should be where you are and with who you are, and so, I don't know, it's, 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 you know, we put out a plan, but the devil is in the details and in the execution and in the, and in the anomalies that come up in the execution of that plan, and so it's, there's still, there's still a lot to be done between now and August 5th and September 8th.
That's right.
I'm, I'm done for now.
Dr. Beers.
Oh, I think a couple of things. It's, oh, sorry. Like this scenario. Answer those.
I think the first point of contact for parents is always the principal of the school, and they are becoming, obviously are aware of the plan as well, and we're helping them with talking points also. Ms. Cox has worked night and day to, to get all of this going up on a special web place, page tomorrow, where parents can read the information, they can look at the schedules, they can look at the, some of the health mitigation strategies, and, and all this information you've got tonight will be on the website tomorrow.
Ms. Young?
I just have a question. So, Dr. Heron, from what you just said, so this presentation will be available for parents tomorrow. Is that correct?
Ms. Cox will, will speak to it, I think. She knows the exact details.
I'd like to hear that.
The webpage will be live this evening, and we'll be sending a message to all of our families with a link to that. The information included in this presentation appears. There's a graphic where you click on the icon, and it gives all of the information from this, and then we'll also be loading the video from tonight's meeting tomorrow on the website.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Beers, can you speak into your mic? Speak into your mic.
Oh, gosh, it is, it was off. One of the things that I say, I've said to all of them is, hold on, watch the meeting tonight, and you'll get a lot more information, and I just want to make sure, and you've really confirmed that, that not, you know, very shortly now, they'll be able to access that kind of information online, because that's what I've, I've basically have said is, I, you know, I understand your concerns, you'll get a much better idea of where the district... You'll get a much better idea of where the district is trying to go by watching that meeting, by watching the meeting.
That's correct. And, and we don't have all the answers in this, in this scenario. And, and the decision will be a very difficult one to make and, and we will keep at the forefront the safety of, of our teachers and, and our students. That is most important right now.
I just had two points of clarification. So school is slated to begin on September the 8th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we're looking forward to. Okay, and the second thing is, can you, for the, for the listening public, can you tell, remind us what CNI stands for?
Oh, I'm sorry. CNI stands for Curriculum and Instruction, the C, the Curriculum and Instruction Department, the coordinators there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Cook?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So just if I could get some clarity around the parent choice virtual learning. So they would apply for the year, for the year, or would they apply twice? One now for this first semester and then once again for a second semester. It's a commitment for a semester, I think I heard, but.
The choices for the year and then we're, we're expecting the commitment to be at least for one semester. So based on circumstances, health and so forth, it could be that a family and a student just, they really determine at the end of that first semester, this is not the best choice and they want to return to.
Can you do the reverse if you decide that you want to go to school for the first semester and then you decide that's not working for me, I want to go completely online? Can you, can you switch to that? Can you opt into parent choice midway through the year? I understand it's a semester chunk, but.
I think at that point, it's really going to deter, depend on numbers, staffing and.
Okay, so.
Resources that are available.
So really if that, if you're a parent and you think that's a, an option for your child, do it now.
I would do it now.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question about, I guess this is path three and path two. Will the remote learning be synchronous or asynchronous or either or depending on teacher choice? The reason I ask is because this is, you know, a lot of families' lives have been a little bit more chaotic than normal. And so I think synchronous asynchronous makes a difference for some families. Do you, have you thought about that or?
Yes, the two day, the alternating schedules, the two days where students will actually be live in person with their classroom teachers. They're receiving that in-person instruction while the other group, the other half of the class is at home receiving, whether that's homework that's been assigned, activities on the laptop or tablet. The teacher will not be interacting simultaneously to trying to teach that small group of students.
No, I understand that, but my question is, is if you're working from home, if you're learning from home, if it's a remote day, whether it's because it's path two. Or path three and it's your day to be at home, do you have to sign on at 10 o'clock to receive that instruction? Or are you, can you do it at your own pace asynchronously?
Today, my understanding is that you can sign on when you're ready to work.
We found with families with, with several students last semester, we, we had to do that because not every student had access to a, a device of some kind. But I think with working families and support for learning at home, we encourage every parent and family to set a, a schedule and, and go with it. But it may not be the same schedule for every single student.
Have to also be careful of bandwidth too, that, you know, that's what some school divisions around a bandwidth when they try to get everybody online at eight o'clock in the morning and just load it.
Right. Thank you.
Clarify that because I'm confused. Is that I, I thought what I saw on the slide was that, like at the secondary level, the days that they were in school, that schedule looked the same as the days that they were at home. So that led me to believe.
That's why I asked the question.
That led me to believe that they had to sign on and log in and be at class at eight o'clock when they're at home and when they're in class. That's what, that's what I saw.
We'll bring in the secondary expert. Dr. Worley's right at the door.
Yeah, that's why I asked, Ms. Hummel, because I, I'm concerned about that because I think when.
That's fine.
If parents are working, that might be harder to.
At the point I saw the same thing.
I missed part of it because there's delay across the hall. So you're asking about in-person learning?
Uh, no, remote learning and whether it's synchronous or asynchronous. In other words, can, can a student, when they are remote because if they're in path two or because it's a home day at path three, can they access that content on their own schedule or do they have to follow the schedule of the?
So when we're in pathway three, when teachers are actually, the majority of the teachers are going to be doing half the class in person. And then the next two days, the other half in person, there's probably a lot more flexibility with the remote learning. We are working through this with the teachers, but we set up a schedule purposely, not that the kid would be sitting there in front of a screen six hours in a row, but they are expected to log on, engage, you know, there may be a time, that might be the time where if a teacher needs to do 15 minutes of direct instruction, he or she may choose to do that at the beginning of that window and the student may choose to work that activity then or later in the day. But we have to have a way to, so that the teachers that need to give direct instruction, because it is new, it's not going to be a review. We want to give them access to their teacher. So we're coming up with a schedule. There will be flexibility, but there will be some expectation for a mixture of both.
So then that, that's what I think we're confused about because the question about is the same teacher going to be, is they're going to be teaching, they're going to be teaching their, their, you know, the Baker kids on a days, Monday and Tuesday, and then the Williams kids on Wednesday and Thursday. But how can that same teacher be teaching the Williams kids on Williams, on Wednesday and Thursday and doing synchronous teaching for the Baker kid?
And that's what I was saying in path three, that's not possible. So in the remote days, that will be like, similar to what Mr. Walker said about elementary, you'll come to school for two days. You'll talk about your activities. You may, you may plan a project, you may plan group, a group assignment, you may have a research assignment you need to do. And your two teachers in person will set you up for the digital access and the work you will do on the remote days that will not be in person. But on the, when we get to the, the original remote two, where, where everybody's remote, path one and path two, there will be days where it is asynchronous. And there will be days where they'll give, you know, activities or log on and start the lesson, say, give kids direction, maybe do a small group. But we will expect that, that kids will, we want them to go through a schedule like they would do if they were in school, to be familiar with it. And, and it may not be that they're in science for an hour, but they're going to get direction from their teacher at that time when we're fully remote.
So I think there's some confusion about what happens when it's fully remote, where there is interaction with the teacher online and when the teacher's there four days a week in a classroom with different kids. And, and it's a different, it's different.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to be really clear with families what the expectation is. And I'll, I'll just say for, I, I, middle school maybe, it's, but high school, I think it's going to be really difficult when it's completely remote to have kids participate for 15 minutes at the beginning of each period throughout the day.
And it may be more than 15, but there, but we want to make it look like, like a normal class. And so you typically, what happens, they received, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 please, yeah.
It may, it may be that the teacher will engage with them the entire time. It may be that they give an assignment and they go into small groups with the technology that the teachers will be learning to work with. Some of them allows them to actually put them in small groups online where they can rotate and work with smaller groups together. So it's going to be all new for the students, new, new for the teachers, but we want to, the important part is we want to give them access to their teacher.
I'm, I am concerned about children falling behind because they're not able to, you know, at that age, their brains are not fully functional in terms of time management. And so I'm concerned for parents who are working and the ability for students to be able to manage that during path two. Also during path two, I just wanted to make sure I understood. So the special groups that you will bring back are some English language learners and special ed. Is that correct? So is there any special accommodation being made for economically disadvantaged students or for kids who are McKinney-Vento homeless kids? Are they getting any additional instruction or being brought back prior to the other non-economically disadvantaged or homeless?
I think there's a focus on remediation for any student who needs it in any particular subject. That piece will happen on Fridays, I believe, where the teacher will assess what's happened during the week and actually work with students who need remediation on Friday.
And will those students during path two be brought into school for?
That actually will be remote in small groups. It will involve teacher age, teachers, instructional specialists, different, all, all the instructional team working with small groups of students and remediation.
So I'm assuming that assessments will be done at the beginning of the year to assess how far, what kind of slippage we've experienced. If that slippage is documented and then it's not being recovered at the rate that other students are, would, are, are you thinking about reconsidering that as time goes on?
Yes, we, even in the most, the first option, the first plan, what's built in that has not been in other plans is bringing students in in very small numbers to assess them. Because we do realize if we don't get back to school physically in some form in September, we've got to figure out where students are. So that is actually built into plan one that was, that was discussed tonight. And obviously it's built into every, every plan of it's in the, if it's in the most, in the fully remote plan. So yes, that's a priority to figure out where students are and then adjust instruction, instruction to meet their needs. You know, there's, it's, it's all very challenging, but one of the, and looking at the positive side, if it's difficult to do maybe in some of this. When the, when the students are in the classroom, they're there with half the students. So the amount of individual attention a student is going to get on the two days that they're at school is going to be incredible. So meeting the needs of individual students, I think will happen even more than it does in a class of 20 something students. It's not, there's not a lot of positive, but I, I think, I think that's one piece that we've got to hang on to, that they're going to get a lot of attention while they're there and be given really good work when they're not there, new learning, reading, activities, whatever it happens to be, just like we did in the spring and it's all well.
I, I, I guess another, I'm just concerned and I'm worried that the gaps are going to widen. And this could be an opportunity to actually narrow them for exactly the reasons you just said. And so I'm concerned about that. Okay, can I pivot to extracurricular activities? In path two specifically, if you're remote learning, are, I, I think I saw that you could participate in, in extracurricular activities. So you're learning from home, but you can go to school to be, participate in a play? Is that, I mean?
We have, for two and three, we said possible, very limited. We, at path two, there will be minimal, if any, activities. So I think the wording in there was that it was possibly that could happen. That will, the, most of that will start to happen on path three and path four.
Okay. And then as we move into, hopefully progressively into path three and four, hopefully it's not a back and forth. I recognize that's certainly possible. Is there going to be an effort to consolidate after-school activities and extracurricular activities so that they can all happen in a year and in a compressed timeframe? Or if something that normally happens in the fall and we're not in school, you know, we're in path one, then we just skip it? Or will there be an effort to rearrange? And I'm particularly thinking about middle school and high school here, but although elementary school as well, whether it's after-school clubs.
Ms. Cook, we're not, we're not at that level of detail yet. Honestly, I, we're so focused on the learning plans and remediation and figuring out where students are and meeting their needs and, and keeping people safe. I don't think we're even close to making that level of decision about, about athletics and, or, or any other activity in schools.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you saying that. I understand. I've just been getting a lot of questions about it, so I felt obligated.
That's good for us to know because we'll start, once we get through everything else, we'll start to, to think about the next layer. Cause every day there's another layer to consider in, in, in these decisions.
Yeah, your priorities are right on. I just have been fielding a lot of questions about that. And then I have a question about, this is kind of following up on Ms. Hummel and Mr. Kelly. I think the more, more transparent you can be about what your thresholds are. I hear that we were not aligning specifically with the governor's phases with our paths. And I get that and I know we're going to rely on local data, but the more we can understand kind of what the, what the decision points are, whether the, where local cases are increasing at whatever rate or we, or the positivity rate shifts, you know, for testing, the more we can be transparent about that, I think the better, because parents are already, families are going to have to toggle. And, and I think they can accept that, but the more they feel like they can anticipate, I think the better. I mean, obviously the decision is yours, but the more transparent you can be about what those, what the, yeah, trigger, I was trying not to use that word.
And I understand. I, you know, look at New York and some of the conversations with Governor Cuomo and what the, some of the percentages that he's beginning to use to drive some of his decisions. And I think the more data we can use, the better, but we are not the experts in health data. And so we're going to be relying on trying to bring a group of people to help us establish something like that. I don't know what it'll look like and, and I don't know if health experts in our community will be able to commit to something as specific as that. But we're certainly going to pursue that.
And then I have a question, and this may be too detailed at this point, and I think this is for Ms. Bourgeois's team. But you know, we have all gotten used to this system of if your child is absent these systems, symptoms without medication for 24 hours, you're not, you know, you, you can send them to school. Is it, is it gonna, is this situation going to shift or change when you can send your kid to school? You know, does, is my, is that a clear enough question?
No, it is. Thank you. And, and the answer is yes. We have a, a team of nurses and staff from student services that have been working on some extremely detailed protocols, which are what our health department and our community members are, are now helping us review. That really changes the landscape of what it's going to look like in the clinic, what's going to be required from parents in order for students to be able to come back to school, what the time limits will be, how that will be reviewed before students allowed to come to class. So, so they, they have really put a lot of detail into that, that work product. And we will be sharing that information after those reviews are completed. We want to make sure we've been thorough in our considerations. As I said, they've used a number of resources. You know, there are tremendous number of recommendations that are coming from a lot of different places, but they are relying on the CDC guidelines and the state VDOE guidelines and the Department of Health. And said these local experts are going to help provide some feedback too.
So last year it may have been fine to send your child to school if they had, you know, a symptom and now it's not. And in three years it might be okay again, but right now it's not.
So the, and they'll, they'll be assessing those, those symptoms. So one of the things that's a difference in, in a lot of the guidelines, you see a fever of 100.4. Well, our standard has always been 100, 100.0. So we're maintaining that and, and it will be 100.0. It will be for a longer period. It's usually, it used to be fever free without any use of any fever reducing products for 24 hours. And that will be a longer period of time. So, so it's adjustments like that.
And then just one more thing, Madam Chair. And this isn't a question for tonight, it's just a comment. At some point, as we shift between different paths and the impact that that has on our employees and their ability to engage or not engage in their work and the impact on the budget, I'd like to at some point have that conversation so that we're, you know, transparent about that. You know, we talked about that the last budget year, but we're at the beginning of a new budget cycle. So I just want to have that conversation, the, the, the impact on, on employees is they're, they are able or not able to do their jobs based on whether they were in, in school or not. So.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Now, before I go to you, if I could just add on, and while Ms. Bourgeois is still here. So, will we be screening children every day before they enter the building or before they enter a classroom?
So we'll be providing a screening tool to all families. We'll also have a screening tool for all staff. And it'll be the parent's responsibility to review that screening tool and be, be able to answer all those questions in the appropriate manner. And the communication will say if, if you answer, I think it's if you answer yes, not no, that you will keep them home, contact your, we recommend you contact your medical provider and those types of things. So it will be the parent checking for students and it'll be the employee checking, using the tool on a daily basis.
Right. So we'll expect families to follow the protocol, but then staff will also?
Staff will be doing it for themselves.
Not for the children?
No. But they will be, there, there's a, there will be a large training process for all of this, for all of our staff. Our nurses will be training, teach. Our nurses will be training teachers on, on things to look for and that'll be part of that protocol of when students should be sent to the clinic for further assessment.
Mr. Dow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate all the effort and planning and trying to consider all the unknowns as they are. That's clearly what, what we're seeing here. I, I appreciate, I just wanted to talk about the paths versus the phases. I can, I do appreciate, I'm fogging up here, that's annoying. I, I appreciate paths versus phases because I think, well, when I was watching the governor today, I had an idea about what I thought he was going to say. And I thought he was going to kick us right back out of Phase Three to Phase Two or even Phase One in certain areas of Virginia. He didn't do that. But I, I appreciate this about paths versus phases because, and I think our parents at home need to understand that, we are looking at local choice here, just like Mr. Kelly mentioned. The governor kind of kicked it back to all the superintendents that make decisions on how they open and when they do. And so we may not look exactly like Virginia Beach or even Newport News in our response to a resurgence of COVID. But perhaps we do, or we exceed that, and Lord willing, we don't. But perhaps we exceed that sometime in November or December. And so if we're in Phase, or excuse me, Path Three, then it would be reasonable to skip back to a Path One for everybody's health and safety at home. So I appreciate that. I think it does need to be drilled into our consciousness for those at home to understand what the difference is and why it's important that we, that we remain flexible in our approach to safety for our students and for our families. I do have a few questions. I, I love the, I love the planning, it's well thought out. And there's going to be some things that we learn just between this conversation, your own conversations and things that get adapted from here. But I do appreciate the planning in it. I'm curious about the family choice. I loved seeing that, that was a nice surprise for me. I think, wow, I won't even say that, almost. But there will be families, and I can think of my own children, that might do well with this. Ten days is concerning for me. Ten days to, to make a decision on whether you want to sign up for that, even for a first semester, is concerning. But that's where we are and we got to do it. Parents need to understand that if this is a choice they want to make for their families, they need to get on it now and really fully understand what it asks of them and their students, of them and their student. My question would be, is there a minimum number of students that's necessary to make this work for that first semester? Is there a baseline number of students that have to agree to be a part of a family choice year-long learning?
That's a good question. I don't think we have a number in mind because we haven't looked at staffing and how it impacts staffing at all. I think once we have the data, we'll be in a better position to make that choice. We always have an option, if it's a very small number of students, to use some of the CARES Act funding to hire someone to teach an online option. So I think if we offer a choice, I, I think we would feel committed to providing that choice.
So, what does that look like then? I, I guess that, for me, I, I kind of see what it looks like. It's year-long, you've got, you know, a dedicated teacher for teaching first grade, dedicated teacher, I mean, all, all the way up, right? One or two, do you have a number that have committed to this? Have the number of teachers, excuse the number of students?
We've, we've, we've just asked teachers about accommodations that they might need, that's going out this week. So we don't know how many teachers will not be able to come back physically to the classroom because they're high-risk or other staff. So we don't have that number or how it matches up. It, it's really, we're trying, that's why the, the choice has, has to happen quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, we're leaving ourselves way back here in terms of transportation and, and numbers of students in the class.
I appreciate you, you putting it that way and for the listening public to hear that this is why it needs to be done now and not to drag their feet on it, but to look into how they can make that choice for their families. You brought me to another question I had though. So with teachers that are potentially high-risk and perhaps we find ourselves opening in Path Three versus a lesser path, what about those teachers? Do we have a COVID-type policy that, and, and a plan for those? That, you know, I'm just not ready. What did that communication look like?
Communication's very detailed. It provides all of the forms that you need if you want to ask for accommodation. It, it provides information on what would be a reason to, to ask for a, an accommodation. I mean, I think it, it is a, more of a physical thing. I think legally, being afraid to come back is probably not a reason. But all of that's, it's detailed out, it's where you go for help, it's how you fill in the forms, it's who to contact in HR through a specific email. Then HR will follow up with every single person, talk it through and work through whether it's an appropriate reason or not. I think we're all sensitive to everybody's in a different place with this in terms of, of being afraid really to completely unafraid. And so we're very sensitive to all of that, but we've got to follow the legal guidelines that we have.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm asking about. So you, you are aware of what those legal guidelines are and how to respond to those teachers that say, you know, I, I know we're in Path Three.
Yes.
And maybe our state's in Phase Four beyond Phase Three, but I'm just not ready. And so you're, you're prepared for that conversation?
It's, it's, it's all been pushed through legal and talked through and the information we've sent out is, is very clear, I believe.
I believe this was in Path Three, the blue-green groups, Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday, Thursday. Was that Path Three, right? Does that change? In, in my mind, that perhaps changes the size of classrooms. Maybe you said it, I don't think I heard it. But does that change the size of classrooms and create optimal social distancing and maybe a, a lower class size per teacher? And so the teachers are spread out across the classes, excuse me, across the schools? Is that what it looks like?
Sure had twenty-four students on her roster, Grade Three. She would see basically half the two days in person.
Okay, okay.
Half on the other.
I got you, okay.
Essentially, we're having to do that to, to adhere to the social distancing pieces and arrangement of classrooms, desks and all of that component of it.
Get to a, potentially a lesser number than full classroom, but it might not exactly be half based on last name, right?
Correct, yes.
Although we have, we have run the numbers and we've, we've based those letters based on some real data as to how the families might fall out across our system.
Is that A for L, A through L and M through Z, is that actually going to happen? So if I'm at home watching and my last name starts with P, I can now assume that my kids are going to go to school on Wednesday, Thursday?
That's correct.
Okay, so it wasn't an example?
That was for planning purposes as well and we've run the data to, to make sure it would work.
Mr. Dow, I think maybe Ms. Young might have a tag along question.
Yeah, it's just a tag along because one of the things that we know about when, when principals are developing class list, I mean, they might not line up exactly. I mean, I think, assume that, right?
That's correct. And as Dr. Heron just mentioned, we have run the data to look at what that split would be like and so that we felt more comfortable with the A to L split and then M to Z.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think maybe there's another tag along question from Mr. Kelly.
Are you done?
I don't think, he's not done.
You go. My, and the last question is about masks. So are, are we providing masks to our educators?
Yes, sir.
Are they just the throwaways or?
They provide it masks that they'll be able to wash and reuse.
Great, okay, that was my last question, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dow, Mr. Kelly.
So, so we spent time talking about parents, now let's talk about teachers. So July twenty-fourth, the parents have to decide whether they're going to go full online or not. When do teachers have to make decisions whether they want to come, they want to teach remotely or they want to, they're willing to come into the classroom? So I'm, so right now, I'm going to assume that we're at Phase Two on September eighth. The K through three are there, the teachers. So when do the K through three teachers have to decide whether they want to be, they're not comfortable going to school, they want to be remote, or they can, they're comfortable coming to school and they're going to teach?
Don't remember the exact date, but that information's going out on Wednesday or Thursday, just going out tomorrow.
Okay.
I can't recall the date for a response. I know there's an intent form in that, but we can get that for you.
Because, also because numbers don't work out exactly, there's some, there are going to be some that are going to have to go one way or the other. And it's an easier conversation going back to remote than it is coming into the school. But just kind of want to know what they, what they are. So, so K through three again, those kids, those students are in school, those teachers are in school. Reading specialists, Visions teachers, speech teachers, do they pull kids out to work with them? Do they pull kids out of each individual class and bring them to a different classroom? Or, or is that not going to, I mean, how is that going to work?
I don't think we've talked it totally through. It was exactly the same question when I met with the teacher groups yesterday that was brought up in both groups. And so we'll have to talk through the protocol at each building and what's safe for students. As you mentioned earlier, students are not affecting each other and, and they're generally not, are less susceptible. So there may be, I know now when students go to groups, they're given a little card and they, they walk to the other adult and back very often, correct? Mr. Walker? And so we may be able to still do that. We just need to look to see what's safe for teachers and for every single adult in the building.
So, so pre-K through three. So March twelfth, a teacher had twenty-two kids in their classroom. So September eighth, they'll have eleven-ish, right? And say some of them are going to remote learn, so we'll say eight, right?
Actually, no, they'll, they'll still have twenty-four students assigned to their roster.
Their roster, but one day through Tuesday, there's twelve kids in the class and one day through Thursday, there's twelve kids in the class.
Yes, sir.
And so, so that teacher, if we're talking about, if we're talking about, if we believe that kids, kids don't give it to adults and adults give it to each other, that teacher kind of stays in their own little bubble and doesn't, the, the goal would be to have as little teacher interaction with each other as possible.
Correct.
The, there's, there's, they're distancing from others. So we talked about giving the teachers masks, is there any other PPE that we're going to give teachers?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bourgeois has all of the details on the PPE that we've ordered. And, and actually, some of this was a result of an earlier conversation with the teacher groups as well as we started to even think about teachers in K through three and teaching reading. And how do you teach reading with a mask on, Ms. Bourgeois?
So, and this is, again, we're continuing to monitor this. We have a meeting tomorrow to review what, what our decisions have been to this point and determine what else we still need to do. We do have clear face shields for all of our speech language folks, for all of our self-contained teachers, for pre-K through, pre-K and kindergarten, I think, might go further than that. We have the cloth masks for all of, all of our employees, for our nurses. We have some additional PPE. One of the things that's recommended, quite honestly, are disposable gowns, you can't bind them. So we are recommending that they have scrubs and have extra scrubs available and, and they're washable. We have ordered a number of Plexiglas barriers for things like the one-on-one assessments and counselors and nurses to use. We are researching right now additional Plexiglas barriers to be able to allow some flexibility with small groups. Oh, hands, oh, hand sanitizing stations. And we have, we have different sizes of hand sanitizers. So we have larger hand sanitizers for places like the gym and the cafeteria, if that gets used. Smaller hand sanitizers for the, the classrooms. We're working with operations about wall-mounted or portable stations in addition to just the traditional disposable hand sanitizer containers.
We're buying by the, by the fifty-five gallon drum.
Yeah. That's hard to find too. We spend a lot of time searching for supplies right now.
I think, I think we've asked each school principal to go back and, and talk to staff and say, okay, this is what we're thinking so far. Think about it and tell us what else you think you might need to be successful. One piece of information, just as Ms. Cox has just brought to me, the staff intent form and to respond to HR is July twenty-third. Did we just?
They have nine days.
We also have, I forgot, I'm sorry. One other thing is, is we will have sanitizing bottles for, for teachers for all of their work areas. So each teacher will have a sanitizing bottle, those, we have some available already, we've got more on order so that they'll have those and there will be additional sanitizing wipes. We use a large number of those already in some of our special needs classes in the clinics, but we'll have additional available of those too.
And what training are we giving for those teachers?
So the training will be developed by, based on the health plan. And so they'll be giving, that, that is, the, one of the next steps is to develop that training, but it'll be done using the guidelines and the recommendations for what does need to be covered and that will be for all staff in the school.
So, when the, the people who are choosing the family choice, though that curriculum and online learning is going to be developed by teachers who choose to be in that online environment, remote environment and not?
Different areas.
Okay, so, so on July twenty-third, a teacher says, I want to, I want to go full-time remote. They'll, they're the ones who are going to be responsible for that, depending upon grade level and depending upon whether we have enough and all of that.
And Mr. Kelly, the, the decision is not to go remote, it's to respond to if you need accommodations and it gives all the information. And then we start to look to see what teachers have such high risks that they, they, they wouldn't want to be back in the classroom and then try to, to put it all together. There are very strict guidelines for being a totally virtual teacher. And there will, there's training and there's expectations. And it'll be all very clearly let out for both families involved and also for the teachers involved in that experience.
Dr. Kelly, can I add on?
May.
I have a tag along, so. Dr. Heron, so if a teacher chooses, if a teacher needs accommodations that, that result in online learning and we're going to give them those accommodations and that, and then things change and go back to Plan Four, I don't know if that will ever happen, but then what, then what happens to those teachers?
Again, the commitment is for a year because of staffing. I think if it, if we, if that starts to happen and it looks like our normal is coming back, we'd have to review everything and see where the students are. But I think when you put someone in an online class, it's very hard to then transfer back into the classroom because all the class sizes have been set across the system. So it's, it's likely they'll be there for the year.
I was going to ask this later, but can I just add another tag along, just to make it clear for the, for the public? So it sounds to me like elementary and secondary would do look a little bit different. So the elementary classrooms, children are in the classroom a couple of days a week with their teacher and then the teacher sends them home to do homework and projects through their tablet or their laptop. There's not another teacher that's interfacing with them electronically and it's not, and it's not their classroom teacher interfacing with them electronically or a class when they're at home. But at the secondary level, I'm a little confused, getting back to our original question. So at the secondary level, they're in class a couple of days a week with their teacher, but then when they go home, they're supposed to be logging on and interfacing with a human?
I think we're getting the, the different levels mixed up in virtual, totally virtual learning or totally remote learning. There's interaction with the teacher, there's scheduled times to go into the class. I do think it's the same for secondary as it is for elementary. Students are with the teacher two days and then they're home following up on work the other two days. Is that right, Dr. Werth? Exactly the same, actually, from my understanding.
Yes, and I think maybe one of the points that makes it a little hard to follow is that K-three is allowed to come back to school in, in Phase Two or Path Two. And so some of them are coming and having that FaceTime on two days and going home two days while three through twelve is total remote in Phase, Path Two. And then Path Three is where we, we, it's the, it's And then Path Three is where we, it's similar. Students half the classes with their teacher for two days in Path Three and the other two days they're working remote while the teacher's teaching the other half of the class.
That's the part where I'm confused, just going back to that schedule. So at the secondary level, when they're at home, let's say we're in Phase Three, we're in Path Three. When they're at home, doing their instruction at home, are they interfacing with a?
So?
Are they just doing projects and homework and assignments?
In Path Three, two days a week, they're with their teacher and while they're with their teacher, they'll be, he or she is setting up assignments. So the other two days when they're home, yes, they're working remotely, online. Their stuff is gonna actually be built in an online platform and they're doing activities. They may have group work assigned, but the teacher is not going to be with them. Yes.
Yes, it's asynchronous. Getting back to the original question, just wanted, okay, that was all my tag along, so now maybe she has a tag along.
In Path Two, it's synchronous.
Yes.
And again, I have concerns about synchronous and I think it has the capacity to further achievement gaps.
Really? Let me, I jumped ahead, Mr. Kelly, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I love your mask, by the way. Phase Three, I'm trying to figure out how you make the jump from Phase Two to Phase Three.
Path Three.
Path Two to Path Three with a high school schedule. Where you've got all the various, but you only get the A through Ls and then the M through, I don't know.
So Path Two on a high school schedule, they're going through their schedule just like they would if they're in the building, but it's remote. They're at home. Their blocks one through four are on Mondays and Wednesdays and Five through Eight is Tuesdays and Thursdays. So it's a regular schedule. One of the things that we tried to consider was having the schedule be familiar and similar for the students. So it wasn't totally different time of day, order of courses. We wanted to keep that familiar for families and students. So when they're remote, they're doing all their work online with their teachers, sometimes live time, sometimes in small groups. When they switch to Path Three, they're divided by the alphabet and half the class will be there on, A through L will be there on their blue days and the other two days would be the green group. And so if you're in school with your teacher, that means just like in an elementary class, whether I'm in a physics class or an elementary class, that teacher of record has half the class there for two days a week. And the other two days a week, that other half of the class is working remotely on assignments the teacher has assigned at home while the teacher is teaching the other half of the class.
Okay, okay. And dare I say the word substitutes?
Yeah, we've talked a lot about substitutes because it brings, you know, someone from the outside in. We haven't found a solution yet, but I know we have substitutes who regularly work in our schools. And so if we can create a pool of regular substitutes who could be part of our environment, they are employed by us, who go through the same health protocols and they worked in certain schools. I think we can begin to manage that because we're going to need them. I have no doubt about it. And so we're not there yet, Mr. Kelly, but we're trying to work through how we could make that safe. Volunteers know, other folks know, but substitutes we may well need.
Have we developed protocols for when a teacher or a student is positive?
Yes, sir. Ms. Berger?
There are reporting requirements and we will be very actively involved with the Peninsula Health Department and they will be helping guide some of that decision-making as to what needs to happen. They'll look closely at the number of contacts. That's why the bubble concept is important. But they will look at, we will gather that information and they will help guide us in some of that decision-making. But the nurses have developed a protocol of how to isolate and the notification to parents and how we determine what needs to be done as far as adjustments and then what the return looks like.
Do we know, and I know the answer to this question, do we know right now how many of our teachers have had it and have recovered from it or have any metrics on that? How many of our teachers have been positive?
I don't have any metrics on that, Mr. Kelly. I think with being gone for the summer, that information certainly hasn't come as far as us.
And there's also some, you know, privacy issues there that you gotta tiptoe to. But because of the contact tracing and all that, you gotta kind of have a feel for that so that you can keep people safe.
Right.
I'm gonna call on Sandy and Dr. Beers, but just clarifying. So with regard to protocols, if a teacher is positive, would we then shut down that entire classroom?
Again, we will get input from the Health Department. You know, it's really gonna be looked at on a case-by-case basis. I would assume that there would be some significant mitigation.
Ms. Young and then Dr. Beers.
Okay. One of the things I'm hearing, Ms. Cook, one of the things I'm becoming very concerned about is I'm hearing this. First of all, you know, I'm very concerned about our parents that are gonna be working during all of this. And if high school students, because they're going to be there on the same day as elementary students, and we do have families that have both high school, middle school and elementary students, I'm very concerned about our high school students especially being able to keep up with coursework. And so I have a clarifying question. Well, those classes that are being taught on, I assume that on the day that all of those kids from a family would be in school together. And I think I've got that part.
That's why it was decided to do it by name, so that they would be home at the same time and be in school at the same time.
Right. And then you're going to send them home. They're going to have homework, assignments, projects, whatever. Is there going to be some way for those students to, I mean, I'm hoping that families are, this just, I am so overwhelmed and I don't even have kids at the moment. I'm overwhelmed for all of you families, but I'm very concerned about work being able to get done for our high school students and our middle school students. And so I hope that those classes, in case students can't, you know, they're distracted or whatever because there is an awful lot going on, I hope those classes that teachers are going to be teaching on each of those days are going to be available for students to go back and review. Will that be a possibility?
Yeah, I'll let Dr. Worley answer, but I believe the courses at high school level especially are all being built in Canvas in our learning management system. So all of the resources and information will be right inside.
Yes, ma'am. So we are building our courses and that's one of the reasons why we're building them in an online platform so that the materials and assignments and activities and maybe recordings from the teacher will be available. We also want to give students real time with their students, which is why we have the schedule that way. But with that being said, this is also new and you're right, it is overwhelming. It's new to all of us. And we have teachers that are gonna work very hard to be accommodating and work with our students and work through this. But the schedule is put in place to give students real-time access to teachers and teachers real-time access to students for questions, for small groups, for activities. But we are building the majority of our resources online for continual access. So if a student misses a class or if they need to revisit something, they will have access to that material online.
Especially on, especially if we're still in Path Two, I think that's where I see the biggest issue, especially for our high school students. And then I guess I just had a question for Ms. Berger again and maybe you too. Because once kids have been sent home and we're looking at the protocols that are going to be developed by the Health Department and everything else, what about the material that they miss?
That's okay. So, well, but that's another reason that the coursework is being developed in Canvas. So even if they're out sick, it'll be accessible to them. It really provides that access regardless of the path or whether or not they're sick. It'll be there already. It won't be that they have to wait for teachers to gather it. It'll be there and be available.
Stand from the presentation, then that work would be assessed and grades would be given.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Young, if I could just build on that and then Dr. Beers, I'll come to you. So in thinking about making accommodations.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
I just want to, I tag along. I want to tag along to Ms. Young and then you had a question, but can I have a tag along? Does she just ask the same? Or you can go. I just have, it's related to what she just said. So with regard to accommodating students and kind of meeting them where they're at, has there been any conversation about particularly at the high school level, allowing students to take less than eight credits?
At this point, we have not talked about that. That's something that we could talk about. We have just talked about making their schedule very seamless so that when we do transition back into hopefully Path Four, that will be a seamless transition and giving students every opportunity to earn the credits that they want to earn and take the courses that they would like to take. Backtracking on one of the previous questions, we will put in places if students are sick, just if we were in real school, teachers would work with students to give them opportunities to make up assignments. And so we will continue to do all those things as well.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'm sensing that we're moving into the weeds here. And I think the most important thing is to get this entire plan out to the public. Let them see how it works, raise questions and they know that they can direct those concerns and questions to the principal. I don't, I just feel as if there are questions that are being asked that really can't be answered yet because we don't really know everything that's going on right now. And I just don't, I don't think it's a useful use of time to get into the weeds. That's not our responsibility. That's not all we're supposed to be doing. We have a very competent staff who I think have put together a very sensible plan. It's complex. It's like, it takes me back to that freshman year in college, the very first time. You go to fill out a schedule and it is really complicated. But probably the only concern I have, I just did the math. We've got three weeks between now and the 5th of August to make a pretty critical decision. That is something I worry about, that they only have three weeks before they make that decision. But I think many of those parents who have been thinking about it have already reached that decision. I think it's what's really important is that we provide it as an option for those parents. Anyway, I just think get the plan out and it, teachers need to see it. Parents need to see it. Students, students need to see it as well. And they're probably gonna raise a slew of questions. I just hope they don't all come to me because I've been told that they are supposed to go to the principal of the school where their children are going to attend in the fall. Is that right? I just wanted to.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. And then just to clarify, parents need to make that decision by the 24th of July. Is that correct? Not August 5th, it's July 24th.
Oh, okay. So say that again?
Parents need to make a decision by July 24th.
So all remote, we're gonna go with?
Wow, okay, so.
And that is only for the all-remote option?
Right, that's if you want to totally go.
Days, 10 days.
Okay, well, my assumption is, I'd say the same thing again, that I'm assuming that a lot of parents, not a lot, but the parents who have been really thinking seriously about not sending their kids to school, this is the option that they're probably going to select. And so maybe the number of days isn't as critical. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
This is just kind of a follow-up to what Dr. Beers said about people that have questions and to ask their principal. I'm wondering whether there couldn't be another venue for general questions that could then create an FAQ, frequently asked questions, that we could put on the website. So we dealt with this at William &amp; Mary where there's a simple, like you click here if you have a question and then they can ask their question and then you may get 50 people asking the same exact question, which is letting you know, letting the school system know, this is an overriding question that would be really simple to explain and put on the website. Or, so I'm just wondering if rather than having everyone go to the principals and have a very decentralized, that's, I'm just wondering about that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. You'll recall that during the COVID closure, we had FAQs on our page and the forward WJCC schools is very similar. There's a place, there will be a place to ask questions. Now, that is not active at the moment because we wanted to give parents a couple of days to kind of digest, but it will be active by the end of the week and we'll develop those frequently asked questions externally for our families, students, and then also on WJCC Connect for our staff members.
Thank you.
Can I, Julie, I think that's a really good idea. And could we, could maybe we extend it and would it be too radical to use our local television capabilities to have a call-in show where you have, or chants there and people that are there to, you know, explain and then if you have questions. But maybe this is too complicated and we can't do that.
It's a fairly complicated thing. I think creating banks of questions and answers and an FAQ will really, really help. And I know you've generated some really excellent questions tonight. Ms. Cox did suggest, you know, we have set a date for the choosing the virtual option. It will give us a baseline. You know, if we really, if parents really are concerned, we potentially could put it out and extend it a little bit longer from that date if we feel it's the right thing to do and we don't get a lot of response by then. So that, it's, we want baseline data. It's gonna impact staffing. But we could introduce some flexibility, certainly with that piece.
But for now, the date's July 24th and live to the date of July 24th?
Go for July 24th. That's important. Correct.
Are there additional questions? So I just wanted to thank staff for the great work and the presentation and it was a lot of information. And I actually appreciate the conversation that we had. I think that part of our job is to help the community understand it. And so I think we asked questions that helps everyone understand it and then we know staff are gonna come back and provide additional information. I do just have one more question. Just one.
Well, the questions being asked, please know the webpage is live. So all of the information is out there already from this evening.
So with regard to special ed compliance, I know that with the last quarter, we waived IEP requirements, understanding?
We did amendments.
We did amendments. So will we continue to do amendments? Or are we going to be able to meet the needs of students as outlined in their IEPs before we amended them?
Well, their IEPs as written are for full-time in-school, a full IEP. So there will have to be adjustments made. We're working through that planning process now. The team is looking at that. So with the amendments that were done for virtual, obviously we have amendments in place for that, but we've got to determine how to address the potential hybrid model.
So for parents who have children with IEPs and 504s, should they expect that someone from the school's gonna reach out to them at some point before school starts?
Yes.
Before September, so they have an idea of what those?
They're working on that planning process now. So there have been, our staff has been participating in a number of webinars and looking at the instructional implications. They have participated in the development of these instructional plans and the different possibilities. So they're very familiar with what they look like and they're now using that to determine what we need. and they're now using that to determine what we need to do to address all the compliance.
Mr. Kelly has one more question.
So are we doing anything to help our teachers with childcare?
We actually have a team working on potential childcare options. In fact, they're working out of Ms. Bujoua's department. You want to talk a little bit about that, Ms. Bujoua?
I do, I have two staff members in my department that are working. They've created a number of different scenarios and looking at those possibilities and are working with community, contacting community organizations and looking at what those possibilities might be like. We don't have a firm recommendation at this time, but they are looking at that specifically for students, primarily K through five, possibly middle school, but primarily K through five. And we're gathering numbers from HR and that sort of thing. So there is a planning process going on.
Because teachers, for instance, who have second graders, and they're teaching, they teach third grade. Monday, Tuesday, the kid's in school, Wednesday, Thursday, they're in school, the kid is not. And so they need to have some sort of-
So we're looking at that, we're working with community organizations and identifying what the potential possibilities might be, and then we'll bring that back as well as what the implications might be.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone. I think we're ready to move on to item 10.1, which is board member comments. I'll circle around this way, starting with Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo your words of thanks to the entire staff on this plan. It's really exceptional, really appreciate it, and appreciate your good nature with all of our questions. I'm sure that there are more to come, and I just appreciate that very much. So thank you and stay well.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mrs. Young?
Ditto to what Ms. Cook said because I am totally impressed. Dr. Beers is right, we have a very competent group of teachers and staff that have been working on this for quite, ever since this began. So I know that things are, there'll be new situations and scenarios that come up, but it sounds to me like we're going to be prepared for it. So thank you again, Dr. Heron, and for the staff that are in the other room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I would like to thank the staff, especially for putting together what I think is a sensible, albeit very complex, set of steps to return to learning in the fall. And I would encourage parents and students and teachers, just as I said before, to go online to learn about these various steps back to school. And any questions or concerns should be raised with the principal or any other, I suppose, responsible individual where, but especially at the school where they're going to attend. The other thing I would say, parents, is they need to be patient, thoughtful. No, they're anxious. I've seen the email, I've gotten those emails. They are anxious. But they need to be, they need to think that way. WJCC.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I also want to thank staff, and they have put in a lot of good work and a lot of good thought and really worked hard. What I'm concerned about is that was the easy part, and now for the next month, it's going to get hard. And as Dr. Beers said, our parents, our students, our teachers, patience and civility needs to be the rule of the day because, you know what, we're not, we've had a little bit more time to build this airplane than we did on March 13th. We're still figured it out, and conditions are going to change as we go forward. Hopefully, we keep continuing to get better, but, you know, we got to kind of understand that and be prepared for that and adjust to that. It's, you know, it's a brand-new world, and it's a new paradigm, and we just kind of have to think our way through that. And that's why it's important to do what you're supposed to be doing. Wear your mask when you're in public, and, you know, stay out of close gatherings, and, you know, just, and be smart. And, you know, I don't know how many hundreds of times I've taken my temperature since March 13th, but I think it's more than I have done the entire rest of my life. But, you know, if you're not feeling well, don't go out. You know, do the things that the CDC tells you to do and that the health organizations tell you to do, and that helps us get back to learning and helps us get back to where we need to be. So patience and civility, and we'll all get through this.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
A plus on that comment, because I agree with you and all of our other school board members that have thanked our staff for all the hard work. And I just am hoping that Virginia behaves themselves and stays where we are and improves. So it's just, we're all in this together, and the more we practice good social distancing and mask-wearing, the sooner we'll be able to move on to Path Three, which is, I think, best we can hope for, maybe, in the fall, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Yeah, I too just agree with all of my colleagues, and staff have done a great job. And so I think the other thing to think about is flexibility. So in addition to civility and patience, I think everyone needs to be flexible, recognizing that the school year isn't really what any of us had hoped for or ever thought we would be experiencing. Yet we are, and we're in it together. And I just wanted to update my colleagues. Really, I attended a Village meeting via Zoom yesterday, and just wanted to thank that group of very diverse community advocates who recognize that they cannot get in our schools in the near future to work with and mentor and support educationally our students, but they are prepared to do that possibly in another way, maybe in a Zoom way. And so I know that many of our students will probably need additional educational supports. And so I encourage families to look at options that are available in the community. I know that there are some programs who are gearing up new, like, educational support programs to help students who might be struggling with the blended learning or all-online learning. And so some of those are available in the community. And so I would just encourage parents. Last question, look at social media and see what's out there because some students will need more support in order to successful in this environment. So moving on to our next item, which is upcoming events. We have a policy committee meeting here on the 23rd at 8:00 a.m. And then our August meetings are on August 4th at 6:00 p.m. here. A closed session starting at, that's closed session, followed by work session at 6:30, and then also on August 18th here in the annex, 6:00 p.m., and then six-odd regular session. Unless there are additional comments, clarification back is adjourned.